I'm going ahead and adjourning this meeting. It is 6:27 Pacific Standard Time or Pacific Time. And you will have three minutes before we can start the next meeting, which will be a special study session of the City Council, the City of Emoryville. So, see you all in three minutes.
I am ready when you are.
Very good. Good evening, everybody. We are calling to order the City of Emoryville City Council's special study session. The time is 6:30 Pacific, and today is Tuesday, July 6th. Bear with me as I read some introductory remarks. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. As of today, July 6th, City Hall is now open with limited hours, and you can check our website, emoryville.org, for further information. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emoryville website at emoryville.org, and clicking on "Council Agendas and Videos." Once there, you will see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as e-notification, and on social media. And I will turn it over to the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
And I am here. The next item is approval of the final agenda. Unless there are any objections, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Donahue, and a second by Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Colleagues, are there any ex parte communications to report for this study session, which is a two-unit replacement at 1270 64th Street?
No.
Nope, seeing none? Now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consented agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk if any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone's raised their hands to make audio comments.
No comment cards, but one raised hand.
Very good, Speaker. You will have three minutes.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, at the last City Council meeting, at a special meeting, at the strangely placed after the regular council meeting, the City Council was talking about should Lennar be allowed to kill every street tree along their Sure &amp; Willing's project on Horton Street? Before the deliberations began on this subject, because they're the people's trees, before the deliberation began, the mayor said the following, quote, "Let me indicate for you tonight how I'm going to vote," close quote. And then, and then the deliberation happened. So, the mayor told her five, her four colleagues that she was going to vote to kill the trees before the deliberation. And so, that's undemocratic. You know, the people of Emoryville don't expect or want council members to come to meetings with closed minds. I mean, we expect there to be actual deliberation, and we expect there to be, each council member to have, listen to their colleagues, and as if they could actually have their minds changed. So, we expect, you know, discussion among the five of you, and then we expect the consensus or not to be reached, but just a debate to happen, and then a vote to happen. What we don't want, and what we're not paying for frankly, are council members coming to meetings where their minds already made up, as the mayor indicated was done by her at the last meeting. So, I would like, the Brown Act does provide that the mayor could respond to this. It looks like you're going to, because I saw you taking notes. The Brown Act does provide that you may make us answer questions by the public at these meetings, as long as it's not, the discussions are not, quote, "substantial," close quote. So, you can say a few words about this. I would like to know, what did you mean, Mayor Martinez, when you said, quote, "Let me indicate for you tonight how I'm going to vote" before the deliberation happened? What did you mean by that? And I'm now ready to receive my answer. Thank you.
I will take a point of personal privilege to answer you, and you may not be getting the answer that you expect, but what I will tell you is that my statements were made during the deliberative process. I made my statement after the presentation. I made my statement after the council had the ability to ask clarifying questions. I made my statement after public comment. And then we come back to the council, and we deliberate. And I wanted to let my colleagues know where I stood at that point in the meeting. And I've had since 2018 to think about this issue. So, thank you for being concerned about the amount of time that it takes for me to digest an issue. I think the time I took was adequate. We're going to move on now. Seeing no further public comment, we have a presentation on our study session. So, I welcome the staff to go ahead and deliver that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Navarro Oaks from the Planning Division of the Community Development Department who will be making the presentation tonight. And Navarro, I believe you have a PowerPoint. Am I correct?
I do. I bringing that up? Where's Sherry?
City Clerk.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Are you seeing it now?
All right. Yes, I am. Thank you, Sherry. And thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So, yes, tonight, as you said, I'll be presenting on the demolition, and proposed demolition and proposed rebuild of two residential units at 1270 64th Street. This is the north side of 64th Street between Doyle and Vallejo. Please move forward, Sherry. Thank you. So, the lot is just over 3,500 square feet. The existing structures are vacant, very dilapidated, and uninhabitable. Code enforcement has been going on there for many, many years. And in July 2020, the property was sold to the current owner, who submitted an application in summer. Next slide, please. So, the application before you tonight is for the demolition or replacement of the two existing residential structures. Both structures are proposed to be three bedrooms and two baths, with each unit being approximately 1,500 square feet and 26 feet tall. The front unit is proposed to have a one-car garage. Demolition of residential structures requires planning commission recommendation upon City Council approval upon its planning commission recommendation, which is why this application is here before you tonight for a study session. Next slide. So, for May 27, Planning Commission Study Session, the commission was generally supportive of the project. They recommended replacing the proposed front fence with plantings instead. And there were some suggestions to reconsider the parking and garage area, and revisiting the design of the front windows. And the majority of the commissioners were supportive of waiving the replacement value fee for the removal of existing street tree. And we'll talk about that more later in the presentation. Next slide, please. Also, here's the existing buildings, the front unit on the left and the rear unit on the right. Next slide, please. And their proposed replacements. Next slide, please. And here is the front of the building. So, this is a south elevation facing 64th Street, situated between the existing structures. You can see they're about the same height. Next slide, please. And this is the east elevation, so with the neighbors would see. And west, oh, sorry, go to the next slide, please. The north elevation. So, we're basically walking around the building here. So, this is the rear of the rear unit. Next slide, please. And then the west elevation, so again facing the adjacent neighbors. Next slide, please. All right, so the existing site plan is on the left here. And you can see, if you look at the top of the screen, that would be the existing rear unit is actually largely on the adjacent properties. So, this proposed project will, you know, be all consistent with planning regulations and building code, which will be a drastic change from the current circumstances. Next slide, please. So, the proposed first floor plan is on far left here. And so, that would be common spaces for both buildings. On the second floor is where the bedrooms and bathrooms are located, and then there's the roof plan on the right. Next slide, please. The landscaping plan exceeds the minimum landscaping requirement, and is consistent with the water-efficient landscaping ordinance. Next slide. So, here are the runways for the project. This is as if you're walking east on 64th Street. So, this is the west side of the 64th Street frontage. Next slide, please. And then directly in front of the property, so this is the front unit. Next slide, please. And here's the east side of the property from 64th Street, so you can kind of see the rear unit and the back there. Next slide, please. And then this is if you're walking down the east side of the property towards the rear unit, which you can see in the back. Next slide, please. For the materials, it's mostly wood, different colors, and then some darker colors for the proposed windows. Next slide, please. So, land use classification and zoning is medium density residential. It is in the north Hollis overlay, which doesn't impact the project much. It does dictate the design of the sidewalk. And two units are permitted use in the RN zone. Next slide, please. For the zoning, the floor area ratio is proposed to be .83, which is over the base floor area of .5. But no bonus points are required in the RN zone. There are special findings that it has to be compatible with the neighborhood and minimize the appearance of auto orientation. The building height is 26 feet, which is under the grade of maximum. There's no bonus, and residential density is at base. It's not the bonus. Next slide, please. So, for off-street vehicular parking, there, as you know, there is no minimum parking requirement. The maximum for a two-unit is two parking spaces. What's proposed is one. And then for bicycle parking, two-unit residential projects don't require bicycle parking, but the applicant is proposing one long-term space per unit. Next slide, please. The required setbacks for the project are met. There's no open space requirement for two-unit projects, although there are open spaces provided for both units. And 10% of the lot must be landscaped, and that is exceeded for this project. Next slide, please. So, for findings, the standard conditional use permit findings are required. Next slide, please. And then also for development bonuses, I mentioned, be compatible with the neighborhood and minimizing auto orientation. Next slide. And these are new structures, so any designer view is required. Next slide, please. And the findings for the demolition of the residential units is that the applicant will provide at least the same number of dwelling units as the demolished structures. And then the replacement structures would feature design quality that is high or higher than the structures to be demolished, and they are compatible with the neighborhood, and that elimination of the residential structures would not be materially detrimental to the housing needs or public interest. Next slide, please. So, a tree removal permit will be required. Standard practice is to have the existing street trees assessed to make sure that there can be an appropriate tree protection plan in place. When the existing street tree was assessed, the arborist recommended that it would not actually continue to do well, so that a replacement tree would be needed. Next slide, please. So, tree removal applications have to be considered by the planning commission. And in cases where there's a need for street tree removal, and it's without default of the property owner, the planning commission can waive the requirement to plant a replacement tree of equal or value, or payment of replacement value fee. And so, one of the questions tonight is if that's appropriate for this case, the planning commission would feel that that was appropriate in their review of the property. Next slide, please. So, in terms of species, the replacement tree species is recommended by the city consultant arborist. There's a screenshot there of the replacement species that are suggested, which are all various types of oak. And arborists recommend species are typically included in conditions of approval for the project. So, that's how that is addressed. Next slide, please. For staff comments, the building fire divisions and department have already provided preliminary feedback for the project. They've reviewed it for feasibility. And then the elevations, staff has noted, need to be revised to show that the proposed sliding glass doors for each unit are accurately reflected in the elevations and runways. Next slide? Oh, wait, that's it. That's it. That's everything. No, next slide. So, the applicant is here tonight, and also has a presentation for the council, and I'm also available for questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Navarro. So, we'll be hearing from the applicant at this time.
And who would like to speak on behalf of the people that I have? Is that Leo? Okay, great.
Leo, you are recognized by the chair.
Okay.
And I will pull up your presentation. Hold on.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Let's see. Had these all organized. One moment, please. Sorry. All right, is that visible to you?
I guess it is.
Yes, that looks good, Sherry.
All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, City Council members, mayor, and city staff for having me over this evening. My name is Leo Speros. I'm representing Beren Studio Architecture, which is, we are the architect for our client, was now the owner of 1270 64th Street. So, our understanding is that this session is not only to introduce the design for this project, but primarily focusing on receiving approval for the demolition of existing structures. So, next slide, please. So, this presentation is mostly to concentrate on how we came up with the design and reinforcing our proposals. And we want to start with highlighting the fact that the existing project, or the existing structures, I'm sorry, are encroaching into the adjacent property quite significantly. So, we want to basically take down these two structures to better accommodate the actual lot shape of the property. So, if you notice, basically traced by red dash lines, that's basically the footprint of what we can have for this property. And it's an odd state lot. It's quite small. So, our challenges were centered towards making the most out of the available area that we can have. Next slide, please. So, these are just additional images of the existing conditions. You can see that there's signs of mold. There's damage to the structure, like the second floor is already collapsing. The roof has pretty much collapsed, or has signs of burned structure. Next slide, please. And so, these are some of our initial sketches. I understand that the modern concept may be a little bit too much sometimes, especially in a historic residential neighborhood. So, what essentially went through an exercise from left to right, we wanted to incorporate some of the elements that are, that we see around the neighborhood, which is like sloped roofs, and breaking down vertical articulations between floors and, I'm sorry, between walls and roof. So, these are some of the examples that we exercised for our mapping. Next slide, please. The quality is quite bad here, but this is nothing new from what Navarro already explained. But we just want to reiterate the fact that the proposed site plan is conforming to building code, but also zoning setback requirements. Next slide, please. And the program of the units consists of three bedrooms, two bathroom, single-family homes. And each of them has a rear yard, which is surrounded by landscape. And there's only one driveway slash garage proposed, which is for the front unit. Next slide, please. So, this is a little bit of a collage of what flash report we're proposing for the material finishes for the building. We want to bring a wood siding to not only blend with the with the neighborhood characteristics, which they all seem to use predominantly siding, but it's usually painted. We just want to maintain the natural color of the wood by using this full wood siding, which is not only durable, but like on the long term, it has great durability. And the rest, the white portion is Nitschihavir cement, fine siding. The metalwork, we're proposing to paint them all black to not only blend with other elements across the building, such as window frames, doors, downspouts, gutters, roof fascia boards. So, I think those elements, we can all have them in a contrasting black color. And then have the landscape be sort of this like changing element, changing seasonal element, using flowering plants, and as well as a couple maple trees for each yard, so that they change again color depending on the season. Next slide, please. We want to bring up some comments that we received from the planning commission study session on May 27. I think the three most important ones was these three comments. So, I'll walk you through what we, what our response is for each comment. Next slide, please. So, the first one is how does the project propose meet the betterment policies for the north Hollis plan? And the specific guidelines not even on the plan east of Doyle Street, which is where the project is located. So, the first one is to preserve and enhance the livability of the existing neighborhood and encourage sensitive infill development that respects the single-family duplex character and scale of neighborhood. Our project is two-story, two-story single-family homes, and we believe that this is consistent with the existing fabric of the neighborhood, which is predominantly two-story, single-family homes. In addition to this, we are required to provide for horizontal and vertical articulation with changes in roof and wall points. And sloping gable or hip roofs are encouraged to reinforce the historic residential character. And complementary traditional building materials, including wood and masonry, are encouraged. So, once again, our proposed project, both single-family homes have a high roof, which is sloped and overhens the building envelope. And we're proposing full wood as one of the main building materials due to its durability and maintenance over time, which is consistent again with the rest of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. The garage parking, so one planning commissioner noted that they would have concerns with somebody parking in front of the garage. And 13 and a half foot setback was particularly a small area to have a car parked there, because it would otherwise protrude into the sidewalk. We believe that the, our setbacks is determined by zoning requirements, which is the average between the two adjacent neighborhoods for this zone. And by having a garage and having that kind of setback, we limit and discourage the visibility of cars, because otherwise, you're going to have to expose the vehicles for either unit. And it was, that's not what we're trying to do here, especially with our COP findings. And also, by having a garage, it's less likely that somebody would park outside, especially given that they have a risk of protruding into the sidewalk. Next slide, please. And lastly, some of the commissioners felt like the front fence was was not kind of friendly and wanted us to replace that with more landscape. Um, it, and we're perfectly open to that. Uh, we replaced, we removed our three-foot wood fence, um, and just left it open and added more landscape. Behind that, um, that, uh, from those front bushes, we have a maple tree. So we, we hid that out of, um, to kind of highlight the actual massing of the building. Um, but funny, funnyly enough, a couple of houses down, you have this overgrown, overgrown landscape um, on both sides of the, of the of the neighborhood's house. So it's kind of complimentary in terms of having landscape exposed to the public. Um, and I believe this is it. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Leo. I will turn back to my colleagues to see if there are any clarifying questions. You actually answered mine with your presentation regarding whether you folks were going to take the planning commission's recommendation on the fence. But colleagues, are there any other clarifying questions on this project? Member Vouters?
Thank you. I didn't, maybe I missed it somewhere, but I didn't understand or receive the information as to why a waiver is being proposed for the tree removal?
Navar, do you want to take that?
Sure, sure. Um, thank you, uh, Councilmember Vouters. Um, so it's not being proposed, it's being posed as an option because the code provides for that. So the code says that it can be waived in circumstances where the trees are being replaced. That there's a fee and a tree replacement. So it's just saying that that can be replaced in the, sorry, that can be waived in these circumstances. It's an option and that's why it's.
Let me ask a different question. Let me ask the applicant, why are you requesting an applicant? Why do you want to do that? Why do you need that?
The tree removal was based on receiving the arborist report, which indicates that tree will not survive construction process, um, given its current condition. So, um, we haven't determined its replacement yet, but it's definitely on the, on our next agenda for the next planning commission study session to propose a, a tree according to the city's recommendations.
Councilmember Vouters, the applicant did not request that. The staff was making the commission and council aware of what the code says.
Okay, so let me just make sure I understand. So there's a sweet gum tree on the property and there's a request to remove that on private property tree. And there will be a future discussion about replacement of that tree and what the appropriate nature of that is. But for the street tree, is the street tree being proposed to be removed and replaced?
So the street tree, that was not proposed to be removed, but staff requested the arborist to do an assessment to see what an appropriate tree protection plan would be. So that, you know, it's just part of the standard evaluation. And then when the arborists went to review the tree, they were like, you know, this is not viable to keep the tree. It needs to be replaced. And here's some recommendations for what replacements could go well here. So it's not through the fault of the applicant, the applicant hasn't damaged the tree. It's a new property owner. It's not like they haven't maintained it, you know, on city property. So in those circumstances, the fee can be waived if, if the planning commission feels that it's appropriate.
Okay, but, and so the diameter of that tree has to be replaced. And so is there enough space for enough trees to replace the tree diameters?
Um, that part has not been assessed yet. So what has to happen before it goes back for approval hearing is to actually have an arborist report. So the arborist just did an assessment, right, of like, can this, what should it?
Just the health of the tree, yeah.
Right. And so they actually need to go back and do the diameter and height and all that type. Like, what is the valuation of the tree? None of that has been done yet.
Okay, thank you. I have no more questions.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, member Medina, did you have any follow-up questions? I thought I saw your hand raised.
That covered mine, thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, member Donahue, did you want to ask any questions at this time before I go to public comment? Okay, um, so now we'll be taking public comment on this item. And I'll turn to our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment. We will also be entertaining folks who have joined us via Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature, or if you're calling in over the phone, please press star nine to be recognized. And you will have three minutes.
We have no comment cards, but Mr. Donahue has raised his hand. Go ahead, please.
I would like the staff to tell us, is this construction project within a zone of stability? And then I would like to speak on the dilapidated nature of the, of the front house. The rear house is obviously wrong. It's not on the property. That's, that should be taken down. I agree with that. But the dilapidated nature of the front house is not a reason to tear the house down. Uh, this is what I do for a living. I've done this for 40 years. I restore, uh, older houses, including houses in way worse condition than this house. I know, I've looked at this house in person. And so the quote dilapidated nature of it is not a reason to tear it down. It's just a, just requires some more work, that's all. Work to make it, fix it up and have it be as in original condition. Um, and that's what we should be shooting for in the, in the east and north Emeryville residential areas. We should be trying to protect and fix up the housing that's there that when it gets older and need of repairs, should be fixing it up, not tearing down. And that should be the default position unless good reason can be shown for something other than that. Good reason for tear down. Uh, so the dilapidated, dilapidated condition of being erased is not good enough. Uh, then I want to mention that faux wood is not wood. The north, what is called the North Emeryville Design Guidelines, where it calls for wood and other materials. And so to check the box of wood using this fake wood product is not, is not, uh, it's a mockery of the design guidelines. Everyone knows it's faux wood and it's, you know, it's gonna look terrible in 20 years. Uh, you know, and also, and which then brings me to the bad design of the replacement structure, structures. For the front house, it's quite a nice little craftsman house that needs work. The replacement design is terrible. I mean, it's not nearly as good as the original craftsman home, not nearly as good. It's actually, it's a, it's really slapdash. And I know because I have a degree from an accredited college of design. I majored in aesthetic design in college and I got a degree from an accredited college. So that makes me an expert in the subject of visual aesthetics. More so even than the, than the council, with the exception of Councilmember Donahue. Uh, so I'm telling you, the replacement homes are not.
It's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff if you have any answers to the questions regarding zone of stability or the design guidelines regarding wood products versus faux wood products. I would say for the dilapidation, that's a findings call on behalf of the council. So you can restate that if you wish. Um, and you don't need to answer the design question from the speaker. But if you'd like to address the zone of stability issue and the, um, the wood products for the design guidelines, Navar, you are free to.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So yes, it is in a zone of stability. Um, that is addressed on page two of staff report. Um, so zones of stability are those which are described as those parts of the city that are not anticipated to change significantly in character, land use, or development intensity over the next 20 years. These include the older residential neighborhoods on the east side of town, which is what this area is part of. And then some other parts, I'm gonna skip over that part of the description. And so what it notes in the staff report, it says, "It should be noted that this designation does not preclude demolition of existing structures or the construction of new structures. The proposed project is consistent with the character, land use, and development intensity of the area, and therefore conforms to the general plan designation of this neighborhood as an area of stability." Also note that the project is replacing two residential structures that have been uninhabited for many years with two new residential structures, which is consistent in terms of use. And then in terms of wood, um, I don't believe the North Hollis Design Guidelines speak anything specifically about faux wood versus wood.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no other public comments, I'll bring it back to my colleagues for deliberation. And Sheri, I believe there was, or is there a slide with the questions that you need answered, Navar? Or I should just refer back to our staff report, I think.
Hey, can you use the staff report or the last slide if you prefer?
Okay, I am just, forgive me, I'm just pulling up that page of the staff report on a slow computer. So colleagues, I will use this to guide our conversation going forward, unless somebody has any new questions that arose from any of the public comments or anything that you've heard so far. So the questions are, does the council have feedback regarding the overall design of the project? Does anyone have anything to weigh in on the overall design? Member Vouters?
It might be helpful if you could just tell us all the questions so I don't end up duplicating my comments.
Absolutely. There are three, there are three questions. The first is on the overall design. Um, the second is can we make all of the required findings? And the third one is regarding the waiver of the replacement value fee for the street tree.
Are you amenable to just addressing them at one time?
Um, sure, go ahead.
I mean, unless others want to take a specific question, I kind of, mine is kind of like, bold answer, I guess. So I, I just, I think there's one piece of just small context that the public comment omitted and the staff, I don't think found it necessary to present it, but I think it's important to remind folks. So the zone of stability is really a general plan concept designed to focus the city's attention on developing priority areas that are designed to improve housing access close to jobs and transit. And there's a couple of single-family home neighborhoods that are deprioritized. Um, but I, you know, as somebody who fought very hard to ensure we were doing right by the people who lived in the 47th Street homes when we had that application before us, I would just note that this property was condemned and it was the subject of litigation that involved a trustee being appointed to take ownership and control over the property to sell it. Um, and if you actually look at page A double zero five in the applicant's packet, the top right picture shows the back of that front unit. The entire roof is caved in. I've been to this property several times. The neighbors have solicited the city's assistance in dealing with this property. Um, it's been used, it's had fires in it, it's had people living in it and engaging in things that have made the building toxic. Um, it's been infested a number of times over. So when we talk about protecting and preserving single-family homes or the zone of stability, I just want to differentiate between homes that are occupied, that have systems that work and have construction that's of some repair versus this home, both of these properties. And so I'm very supportive of the application and the design of the structures. I support the application insofar as those elements of it. I, I won't give any criticism or critique on the actual design of the building or the materials because I think that they are sufficient and the findings can be made, that they are consistent with the neighborhood. I do have two comments, however. Um, the first is that the planning commission comment about the parking space, I think, needs to be evaluated further. The average length of a vehicle is between 14 and a half and 15 feet. Um, and so this parking space in front of the driveway, uh, which is just over 13 feet, would lead to vehicles. People will use the driveway to park their car. Uh, if you've talked to anybody in that neighborhood, garages are frequently used to store things. I imagine some of us here do the same thing. So I would just state that I think that either the setback should be examined a little further to just move the property, the house back, or do something else to accommodate that space, or move the house up if that's the case, to make it so that it's not possible to park into the sidewalk. I think that needs to be explored further, so I appreciate the planning commissioner who raised that comment. The majority of my, my comments and my feedback, though, are about the tree situation. Um, I do not support and will not vote to waive the tree fee for this property. Um, I'm not going to vote to do that probably again in the city, just because we have to be in the business of providing trees, public, public trees. My concern is that even if the arborist found that the maple is in poor health and that the sweet gum tree on the property has some challenges due to the roots crawling over themselves and the gash on the tree that will bleed or not heal properly. The tree, I went out and looked at it, the tree is actually visibly fine. Uh, but I understand the trees can look fine today and actually be on a path to being sick. The problem I have with the application is that the proposed private trees are not trees. The, the Lajastrium trees are essentially crepe myrtle, and crepe myrtle is a large shrub. Um, they're pretty, they have huge flowers on them, but they're not trees. And so my concern is that when we are redoing these properties and letting developers uh, who are getting a property like this at a very bargain rate, to be honest with you, I'm happy that they're doing this project. I think it's a good improvement for the neighborhood. But they're purchasing this at auction. And my concern is that there is an avoidance of, of leaving some space on properties for trees. And trees are essential to climate change planning, livability in the community, making homes enjoyable for people. And so my criticism of this project is the lack of trees. Um, I think that there needs to be a replacement of street trees that is conformance to the UFO. I think that it needs to be the fee for the tree. And I think that there needs to be a better tree plan for the property itself because I don't believe crepe myrtle are gonna be sufficient. They provide no canopy and they provide no backyard shade of any substance to people who are gonna enjoy these otherwise good outdoor spaces they're developing. So I would not grant the tree permit and I would not waive the fee because at this time I think the tree plan is insufficient. Thank you.
Very good. Um, Scott, Ellie, do you have any comments to offer? I can remind you of the questions again. Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor Donahue.
I think John's point about we need to eventually have a canopy in our city that really will protect our planet and our city and keep our heat island effect in the future. So I think the applicant should be encouraged to have two real trees in their backyards. Or if they can fit one, if they want to, that would be great. And I agree with Councilmember Vouters about, we have to pay for new street trees and the city can't really constantly afford to do that, and this is a development. And I think they should pay for that street tree.
Member Medina?
I'm gonna agree with my fellow council members. I think the design's fine. I think the demolition findings can definitely be made. Um, I agree with them not waiving the tree thing. And perhaps this is a policy discussion that we need to like revisit and provide greater clarity to the UFO in the future. Um, but just because we could doesn't mean we should, and I see no compelling reason why we should.
Very good. So I'm seeking a majority for not waiving that tree fee, so I'm going backwards. Um, and then let's skip back to number one. Is everyone in agreement, because I am, about the, um, the issue with the parking? Because there will definitely be a car parked there if a car can be there. So, um, yes, 100%, we would like the applicant to please revisit the issue that if you have spent a minute in Emeryville, you will know that people will take any opportunity they can to park outside of their space or their garage. Um, so please, um, definitely consider that. And then, um, Navar, you've got your hand raised, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
Right, that was hard for me to change that setting. I apologize. I just wanted to note that, um, the setbacks are based on design guidelines in this area of being the average distance of the buildings on either side of it. It has nothing to do with, setbacks aren't determined by a parking space. And so none of the setbacks in the city are enough to provide for a full length of a standard parking space, which would be 18 feet. Our standard setbacks are none, 10 or 15 feet. So I just wanted to make it clear that the setbacks for, front setbacks are not determined based on car length.
I think we understand that. I think we're just trying to anticipate a problem that we see happening, which is a horrible part there and leave half of itself on the sidewalk. Um, so not sure if there, what creative solutions there are to that, but, um, member Vouters suggested a couple of directions to explore at least. Um, but aside from that parking issue and the tree issues that were raised, does the council feel that all of the required findings can be made? And then let's talk, it's. And then let's talk, it's specifically for the demolition, and we can have Navarre repeat what those findings need to be if need be, but I just wanted to make sure that council agrees with staff that we can make those findings for the demolition. Good. Member Medina? Okay, so we have answered all of these questions. Staff, is there any question that is lingering that you would like council to answer at this time?
I think you've addressed them, thank you very much, I appreciate your view.
Very good, and I want to thank staff for a very clear and concise report. Well done, it was just very easy to read and understand and go through, appreciated the PowerPoint as well. So, okay, that concludes this special study session, and we are right on time to adjourn this meeting and begin our next meeting, maybe five minutes off. So it is 7:18 PM Pacific, and this meeting is adjourned, and I will await my city clerk to let me know when to begin the Public Financing Authority meeting. And just for those members of the public who are viewing this at home, we've got several very short meetings to get through, which we do on an annual basis before we get to the main event of the regular city council meeting tonight.
And we are ready to go, Mayor, for Public Financing Authority.
Very good, thank you. I've got the time as 7:18 PM, and I'm calling to order the City of Emeryville Public Financing Authority meeting. And please bear with me as I read some introductory remarks. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. As of today, July 6, City Hall is now reopened to the public. Please see our website, emeryville.org for further information on our limited schedule. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on "Council Agendas and Videos." Once there, you'll see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. And I will turn to our clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
I am here. Next up, we've got approval of the final agenda. We've only got one item, so do I have a motion?
Same.
Second.
We have a motion by Member Bauders, the second by Vice Mayor Donahue, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Are there any ex parte communications on this meeting? Seeing none, we will move to public comment for consent agenda, and item's not on the agenda. And as we have a long series of meetings tonight, I'm going to limit public comment to one minute from here for on, out to the rest of the, for the rest of the meetings. Now, it's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
No comment cards, but there is one raised hand, Mr. Donahue.
You have one minute.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, people submit comments, I have three minutes, but speakers only have one minute. I'm not quite sure why speaking is being discouraged, Jer.
I'm limiting all comments to one minute from here on out.
Oh, no, you just read, the city clerk just read that three minutes will be allowed to read the question for public, for a submittal in writing, so.
I'll go ahead and take the privilege and change that right now, and we have no submitted comments, by the way. So you have the remainder of your time, actually a full minute, of course, you have one minute.
I don't think we should be encouraging or discouraging a mode of speech. Okay, the reason why I asked about the Zone of Stability for the last item was not because I wanted to cry foul, but to find out if it is in the Zone of Stability, and I find out, yes, it is. So when the, for the first, like, three years of the new general plan, the staff would never tell the council that a home slated for demo was in the Zone of Stability. It wasn't until I started complaining, why not tell the decision-makers that the home in question is in the Zone of Stability? It was only after I started doing that, that the staff started reporting to the decision-makers the home in question is in the Zone of Stability. Now the staff is going back to the bad old days, as it would appear, where they're no longer informing you that the home is in the Zone of Stability. And it should be in writing and verbally at the meeting, so that the people watching will also know it's in the Zone of Stability. I ask the staff now, why exclude that? Why not tell us that the home in question is in the Zone of Stability? That's my question to the staff or any council member that wants to take it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I'll answer briefly that that was in the staff report, that it was in the Zone of Stability. So seeing no further public comments, we can move to the consent calendar. Colleagues, are there any questions regarding the consent calendar? If not, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar, Madam.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Member Bauders and a second from Member Medina, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that passes unanimously among those present. We have no action items, and this meeting is adjourned at 7:24 PM. And Sheri, when you let me know you're ready, I will start the next meeting.
Okay, all set, thank you.
Very good. The time is 7:24 PM, and my introductory remarks that I made a moment ago will still stand, and Sheri, can I assume that our roll call, we are all still here?
Yes.
Thank you. And I don't know if I mentioned the time, it's 7:24 PM, and this is the Community Development Commission of Emeryville. The item that we have up next is approval of final agenda, and again, we only have one item on our consent calendar, so do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Member Medina, a second by Member Bauders, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Colleagues, are there any ex parte communications? Seeing none, now is the time for public comment, and I'll go ahead and apologize for saying three minutes when I meant one earlier, I'll correct myself this time. Now's the time for public comment, the public comment portion in this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. One minute will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
No comment cards, but Mr. Donahue has raised his hand.
Very good. Speaker, you have one minute.
Okay, let everyone realize here tonight that the Mayor Martinez announced or agreed that she stated, quote, "Let me indicate for you tonight how I'm going to vote at the last meeting before the council deliberation." It is true that it was after the public comment, and it is true it was after the staff report, but it was before the council deliberation. So I think it is untoward for a council member to announce that. I mean, I don't even think you should be thinking like that. I think you should have an open mind and willing to listen to your colleagues. That's what we're paying you for. And besides, I think it's unethical, frankly, to have made up your mind before a meeting on how you're going to vote without listening to your colleagues. We pay your colleagues to be able to persuade you. You need to be able to be persuaded by your colleagues. And I resent, frankly, that you showing up to meetings with your mind already made up. Are you doing this all the time? Is this a common thing with Mayor Martinez? Is this a one-off thing?
That's your time.
It's very untoward.
There's your time. And again, I'll remind you that I don't come to meetings with my mind made up. I made up my mind after a public comment, after clarifying questions, and deliberation is the time where we express our opinions to each other. You'll see other of my colleagues do the same thing, but you only seem to call out the women. So let's move on. Now we've got the consent calendar. Colleagues, are there any questions? No?
I can motion to remove the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Bauders and a second from Member Medina, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that concludes this meeting. It is adjourned at 7:28 PM, and I will await the clerk to let me know when we're ready to begin the Management of Emeryville Services Authority meeting.
Okay, we are ready.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is 7:28 PM, the day is still July 6, and we are convening the Management of Emeryville Services Authority meeting. Please take my previous comments as still standing regarding teleconferencing, and we are all still here, so we will move on to approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Medina, a second by Member Donahue, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Colleagues, is there any ex parte communication to report for this meeting? Seeing none, now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to the items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. One minute will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star or nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk for any comments that have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
No online comments, but Mr. Donahue has raised his hand.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so tonight, the mayor said, admitted that, yes, she made up her mind before the council deliberation, but her excuse is that all the other council members do it also, which I haven't heard. If you can tell me a time when they've done it, I'll cry foul for that as well. I've never heard that. You did it. Actually, I heard Nora Davis said it one time, actually, that is true. And yet, Nora Davis is a woman. So I guess only, what, only women do this, is that what you're saying? So the calling out the sexism comment is reprehensible coming from an elected official. And so the citizens may not, according to the mayor, may not criticize the job performance of women council members, is that what I'm hearing? So only men council members' job performance may be criticized by the public. Least you get called a sexist by the mayor. So how is that right?
That's your time, and I did not call you a sexist, you called yourself a sexist.
No, I didn't.
This, you just said I called you a sexist, and this is not true, I did not use that word. Thank you. So this meeting is, oh, we still have our.
I'll move the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Member Bauders and a second by Member Medina, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That passes unanimously amongst those present. So we have one action item tonight, that's item 7.1, and we are adding a meeting to our Mesa calendar. Do we need to have a staff presentation on this?
I don't believe so, Madam Mayor. This is just adding a regular meeting in case the council had to take action or discuss a personnel matter.
Very good. So are there any clarifying questions, colleagues?
Just Madam Mayor, if I could jump in quickly?
Yep.
You have on your subsequent next two agendas, council calendar considerations?
Yes.
Should you wish to set a regular Mesa meeting, then by setting this meeting on July 20, you would then have the opportunity to also set another regular Mesa meeting at a subsequent meeting in September, which you probably might want to consider needing.
Yes, thank you, and I do see the need for that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. So colleagues, if there are no questions, I'll go to public comments. Speakers, you will have one minute to comment on this item, and I'll check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment, or if any hands are raised on the specific item of the meeting's schedule, and I'll ask you to stay on topic, you will have one minute.
No speaker cards, but one raised hand. Go ahead, please.
Insofar that these two men council members.
You are out of order, you are out of order, that's the.
No, I'm talking about scheduling.
It's just your list.
I'm talking about meeting scheduling. Insofar that these two men, stop interrupting me. Insofar that these two men council members may make a mistake on the meeting scheduling, I'm going to, I'm right on your asses, because we're not allowed to criticize the women council members anymore, according to the mayor, but we, so that leaves the two of you, Councilmember Donahue and Councilmember Bauders. So any screw-up by the council, you guys are going to take the heat now, because the women council members are off limits for criticizing the job performance. So you better not screw up the two male council members, the two men, I'm watching you.
Seeing no other public comment, we will deliberate on this item, or do I have a motion and a second?
Madam Mayor, if the staff report is simply just asking for us to add a Mesa calendar date without a specific date, I'll make a motion to add a Mesa meeting during the calendar year.
I'll second.
Sure. Is that correct, Madam Speaker?
To clarify, this is scheduling a Mesa meeting on July 20?
My motion is to schedule a meeting for Mesa on July 20.
That's right.
So we. Yes. A motion by Member Bauders, the second by Member Medina, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that concludes this meeting at 7:35 PM. And when you are ready, Sheri, I will begin the next meeting, and I'll read the introductory remarks again, and we'll redo the roll.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I am ready.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:35 PM, it's still July 6, 2021, and this convenes the City of Emeryville City Council meeting, calling this meeting to order. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. As of today, July 6, City Hall is now reopened, and please see our website, emeryville.org for more information on our limited schedule. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on "Council Agendas and Videos." Once there, you'll see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. So the, I will turn to our. I will turn to our clerk to please call the roll.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, is this the successor agency meeting?
Did I miss a meeting? I apologize.
You've called to order the successor agency. You can confirm that.
I am calling to order the successor agency meeting first, and I apologize, and I thank you for that clarification. I had skipped a page. But we can still call the roll.
Okay. Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here. Do we have a motion for the approval of the final agenda?
I'll move to approve the final agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Member Bowers, a second by Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. Now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. One minute will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the clerk whether any public comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to submit, to make audio comments.
No online comment cards, and could you confirm, are we still doing one minute?
Yes.
Okay. So we have one raised hand? Go ahead, please.
Okay, this is a question to Councilmember Donahue. You were at the last council meeting when one of your colleagues, who is beyond criticism, said that their mind was made up before the council deliberation. So now, because that council member colleague of yours is beyond criticism due to an external condition, the onus is now on you, Councilmember Donahue, to explain. What did that council member mean by that? Why did the council member make that observation? It's undemocratic. Why did you sit there and silence Councilmember Donahue when your colleague made that odious comment, undemocratic comment? Why didn't you stand up for democracy, Councilmember Donahue? The council member in question is beyond reproach, may not be criticized, so it goes now to you because you are one of the...
That's your time.
...that could be criticized.
That's your time. So seeing no other public comment, we're on the consent calendar now, right? I keep losing my place.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding the consent calendar or discussion? And if you don't, I will accept a motion and a second at this time.
Move the consent calendar.
I have a motion by Member Donahue.
I'll second.
And a second by Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. That passes unanimously amongst those present. Next up, we've got an action item, and this one we do need to discuss. So I'll turn it over to staff for a brief presentation.
So Madam Mayor, this is, at the request of Councilmember Bowers, we've placed an item on this successor agency agenda and also the city council agenda to reconsider your meetings that are current, your regular meetings that are currently scheduled for August 31st and September 20th. So we would like to get some feedback tonight about what you would like to do with our request, and then depending on that feedback, if there was an interest in canceling and rescheduling meetings, we would bring items back on the July 20th agendas for the Mesa Board, the successor agency, and the city council. Sheri, did I miss anything?
Nope, that was perfect.
Very good. And Member Bowers, can I turn it over to you to make your specific request?
Sure, thank you. So as the city manager noted, we have two meetings. They're on unusual dates from where they normally are due to a Jewish holiday that we at the beginning of the year worked around, which was September 7th, what our normal date would have been. And this wouldn't have been a request had we not had the unexpected resignation of Councilmember Pats. I had organized and arranged through my employer after 20 years of nonprofit work to take some time off, and I'm going to be not even able to participate electronically. I will be remotely hiking through the Boundary Waters in northern Minnesota. And so there is one date, actually, that I will be available. I will be serviceable, so to speak, and I wanted to offer that date to have a meeting, consolidate the other two dates, mostly because it was brought to my attention by the city attorney that it would require still three votes to pass anything, and so we would just put pressure on the three of you to have unanimous votes on everything that came before us, and if there was an emergency situation that required a four-fist vote, it would still require four of us, and so my absence could preclude the city from taking action in an emergency. And I did not want to, obviously didn't plan on Councilmember Pats resigning, but I also did not want to leave any of my colleagues hanging and unable to conduct a meeting. And so September 13th is a Monday, which is a non-standard day for us, but I am available electronically on Monday. I will be, for one day, on my way to my destination, able to do that, but I cannot do the 31st, and I cannot do the 21st of September. So I just wanted to see if council was amenable to a longer meeting, and if not, just to understand what the trade-offs might be.
So let's take the time for clarifying questions. Then we'll go to public comments, and then we'll deliberate. So Member Medina.
What time would this meeting start? I just want to know, do we have sustainability on that day?
It would be whatever the council prefers. I'm fine. I mean, it can be whatever. Anytime after 2 o'clock is fine.
Member Donahue, did you have any questions?
No, I find it acceptable that we started the meeting at, say, 5 o'clock. Sustainability is usually open by then. That would be two-hour difference. It would be 3 o'clock your time, Joe.
Very good. So seeing no further clarifying questions, we will go to public comments. Now would be the time to comment on this action item, item 7.1, discussion of our calendar. I will remind those joining us via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to be recognized, or if you're calling in, please press star nine to be recognized. And I'll first ask the clerk if there are any submitted electronic comments.
No electronic comments at this time. And one raised hand? Yes.
Very good. Speaker, you have one minute.
Go ahead, please.
I've decided not to comment on this subject.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to my colleagues. I'm just fine with the meeting on the 13th. Is everyone else open to that as well?
As long as we can make it work around sustainability and time's up.
So as long as we can make it work around a sustainability, regular meeting, everyone seems to be in agreement. Do we need to make a motion?
I think we do, because the city manager will have agenda items that require us to have specified the time and date in order for us to comply with certain elements of law. So if sustainability committee members could tell us what time they would prefer, I'm amenable to any time.
I think if it started at 5:30, that would give us plenty of cushion. City Manager, does that seem reasonable to you?
It's Councilmember.
Okay.
The public speaker is still on talking permitted, by the way.
Yes. Clerk, please meet the public speaker. Thank you. So I will go ahead and make the motion to have a meeting scheduled on September 13th at 5:30 PM in place of the other two meetings that Member Bowers cannot make. So need a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Member Bowers, and I will turn to the clerk. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
So Madam Mayor, we will return with items on July 20th that conform your regular meeting schedule for those three entities to that direction.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
That concludes this meeting. The time is 7:46 PM, and Sheri, when you're ready, I will convene the regular city council meeting.
Okay, I'm ready.
Very good. Sheri, do you need me to read the introductory remarks again and call the roll again?
You just read them prior to the previous meeting, did you not?
I did.
Okay, I think we're good then.
Very good. So again, for the members of the public joining us, we are convening the regular city council meeting of the City of Emeryville, and we just called the roll at a previous meeting, and we are all still present. So the next up is approval of the final agenda. Colleagues, do you have any changes to the final agenda, or shall we see the items as they are listed? I'll accept a motion and a second.
I'll move the agenda.
A second.
I have a motion by Member Medina, a second by Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. That passes unanimously. There are no special orders of the day. Sheri, do you have announcements of commission and committee vacancies?
Yes, please, just briefly. As the council recalls, we do have vacancies and appointments to make on the Planning Commission. That action was extended to the July 20th meeting. We are accepting applications right up until Monday, July 19th at noon. And again, those appointments are scheduled to be made at your Tuesday, July 20th meeting. Additionally, we have openings still remaining on the Commission on Aging and Housing Committee. There's a recruitment open for those positions. The applications are due Monday, August 2nd, which is our normal 45-day recruitment period, and the appointments for those positions will be made at a regular meeting, which now sounds like it will be on September 13th. Thank you.
Very good. Colleagues, are there any council members' special announcements or reports on meetings attended? Member Medina.
I attend to the ABAG MTC meeting that has our city's voting delegate. We adopted the budget. The good news is that they've cleared the pension liability issue significantly. The not-so-good news is that there were 120 cities and delegates on the call, and they decided to, first of all, roll call voting, so disaster right away. Just a nightmare situation for no apparent reason. I don't know. Like, no other regional bodies during this. But also, everyone decided to chirp up about arena numbers and change the direction, giving in ABAG staff to consider flexibility in implementation of arena numbers. Seems like there's a growing coalition of cities who would like to include preservation... Yes, a coalition of cities, a league, if you shall. I'm sure that'll become enough next. Who would like to allow preservation of existing affordable housing to count towards their arena numbers. I spoke out of an opposition of that. I felt that our city supports building more housing, and that preserving existing affordable housing is a thing the city should just be doing already with 100 perfections and whatnot. And I did voice that unpopular opinion during this meeting.
Thank you for doing that, Member Medina. Does anyone else have any things to report from outside meetings or announcements? I've got one announcement... Oh, Member Bowers, go ahead.
I just want, for those of the public who may be interested, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District on July 21st, beginning at 9:00 AM, will hold the back half of the Marathon Public Meeting for the development of Rule 6.5. We had almost nine hours of public comment at the last meeting. We will continue public comment, but we anticipate concluding that. That rule will impose the strictest regulations for an air district if passed on fluidized catalytic cracking units for refineries in the Bay Area. Has a massive impact on the economy of the Bay Area potentially, but also on human health and, yeah, human health. And so I would just encourage anyone to visit backmid.gov if you want to learn more about that rule or attend that here.
You're echoing in a way that makes me think that Chevron hacked your microphone on your computer.
Thank you, Member Bowers, for your service on that agency, and I will confirm that I tuned in to just about, you know, 45 minutes of the public comments, and I commend you for sitting through a whole day of listening to our public and their wishes. And a lot of what I heard was in favor of, you know, tightening those standards. So thank you for the work that you do on that agency. The announcement that I have to make is that we currently have wind turbines in operation at the Altamont that are powering Alameda County now. So we... This is through a power procurement agreement made by East Bay Community Energy, and for a long time, you know, they stand up the turbines, but until all of the, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, they don't pull out the pin and let them spin. So people might have thought that they, what's the point of having all of these turbines if we're not getting wind here in the Altamont? Well, the answer is, we weren't getting wind, and we finally got everything cleared through the CPUC and all the other entities to go ahead and get that renewable energy generated in Alameda County. So I got a video of them spinning today, and it's really, really good news for us to be generating jobs and cheap renewable electricity locally. So that's my announcement. Madam City Manager, do we have a report today?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, and you alluded to it a couple of times, so City Hall is reopened as of today. Thank you. I just want to thank all the staff for the incredible work they've done over the last year-plus to keep everything going in a remote work environment. We are coming back in somewhat of a hybrid work environment to keep the footprint in City Hall low, but services are open to the public. And just want to also mention that we have some changes in our counter-hours to make things a little bit more predictable for folks. So Monday through Thursday, the planning and building counter is open for walk-ins in the morning, and Monday through Thursday is set aside for appointments. So please go to the city's website for additional information, and we hope this will be an improved, enhanced service for folks. And again, just want to thank you for all your patience with us, and really want to appreciate the staff for all the work they've done. But yes, City Hall is reopened as of today.
Great. Thank you, Christine, and welcome back to all of our great City of Emeryville employees who are now doing their jobs back in the city. Colleagues, are there any ex parte communications for this way of our city council meeting? Member Bowers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We pulled the agenda. On item 11.1, I have spoken to Anna Nikotiris, proprietor, owner of the bank club. On item 11.2, I have communicated with Ronnie Hatrip from the manager for the Emery Go Round. On item 11.3, I've spoken to staff in Environmental Protection Division of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And on item 12.2, I've spoken to the staff at the Alameda County Transportation Commission. And on item 12.7, the Office of I.C. Transit Board Member, Jevanka Beckles. Thank you.
Very good. Colleagues, any other ex parte communications to report? Okay, seeing none. Now is the time for public comment, and there goes my dog making public comment. Now's the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. One minute will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hands to make audio comments.
No comment cards, but one raised hand.
Very good. Speaker, you will have one minute.
Go ahead.
The Lennar Development Corporation has closed both sidewalks on either side of the street on Sherwin Street. There is a regulation within the City Hall that says, and the planning department says that developers are not allowed to do that. They have to do one side and then the other side. However, Lennar would save money if they did both sides at the same time, so I presume that's why Lennar chose to violate our regulations. So I have a question to the staff. Did you... Christine, who refused to answer my calls, or emails, emailed and called, as she refused to answer, did you grant permission to Lennar to close both sides of the, both sidewalks on both sides of Sherwin Street, or did you not? Or did you not? And are they doing this in a rogue capacity? In which case, are you going to penalize them and are you going to make this right so pedestrians can go down Sherwin Street?
Is that the public comment?
Yes, the time had elapsed.
Very good. Thank you, Sherry. I'll direct staff to go ahead and answer that question offline as this is not an agendized item. But thank you for your public comment. I see no other hands raised from the speakers. So we will move to consent items. Colleagues, is there anything that you need to pull from the consent agenda? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move consent.
And I'll go ahead and second myself. We have a motion by Member Medina, a second by myself. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue. And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. That passes unanimously among those present, which will move us to public hearings. The first is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the Chief of Police to issue a 2021 annual cabaret license to the Bank Club Cafe. This is a regular cabaret license that we've seen as a council many times over. So I'm going to recommend to my colleagues that we waive presentation unless there are any dire questions or changes that you feel need to be addressed. Okay, so Chief Jennings, thank you so much for joining us. But we're going to waive presentation because we are very familiar with this item as a council. It's come before us several times individually. But I will make sure that we have public comment as this is a public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing. The time is four fif- excuse me, 7:58 p.m. And I will ask the public clerk whether anyone has submitted electronic comment or whether any hands were raised amongst our attendees. And I'll remind those on Zoom to please use the raise hand feature to be recognized or if you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand.
I have no electronic speaker cards. I have one raised hand and at this time.
Okay, very good. And as this is a public hearing, I want to make sure that we're, and we're running on time, so I want to make sure the public has enough time to comment. So I will go back to three minutes for speaker.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Go ahead.
I don't wish to comment. Mute me, please.
And Sherry, I cannot, I'm having trouble seeing the attendees list, so I'll rely on you to let me know if there are any other raised hands.
Not any raised hands, but I do note that Ms. Nikotaris is on the call and I didn't know whether a public comment was requested from her.
I'd be happy to entertain a comment from the applicant, Ms. Nikotaris, if you'd like to.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Anna. I am the owner of the bank club, third generation, running the bar and the restaurant. And I just want to thank the City of Emeryville, which I love a lot. I was born and raised here, for all the help and support. And that's it?
Very good. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
So I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:00 p.m. As there is no more public comment and bring it back to my colleagues to entertain the resolution or if there's any discussion, please feel free. Member Bowers.
I should probably be recused only because I patronize all of our local businesses and this is one of my favorites, but instead I will just make a motion to approve the requested license.
And I'll go ahead and make that second. So we have a motion from Member Bowers and a second for myself. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. That passes unanimously among those present. The next public hearing we have is item 11.2. And again, colleagues, I'm going to recommend that we waive presentation on this unless you would really love a presentation because the ETMA board has recommended no increase to the assessment. So under normal circumstances, if they were going to ask for an increase, I think that would warrant a discussion. But colleagues, if you wish to have the presentation, please let me know. Member Bowers.
I would just like to the opportunity to ask a couple of questions about the recommendation from the board.
Absolutely.
I don't know who from, I think Ronnie is here somewhere.
Ronnie is here with the panelists.
Oh, there she is. Hi, Ronnie, how are you?
Hi, I'm doing well. How are you? Good evening, councilmembers.
Hi, thanks. So I just, reading the report, I noticed that the original staff recommendation at the Emery Go-Round was for kind of the standard 3%. And every year, the maximum amount of a increase is 5%. And then the board voted for zero. I traditionally would never vote for 0% to be honest with you for a couple of reasons. And I just wanted to see if you or any of your board members could perhaps elucidate whether something between 0 and 3 was discussed and what discussion around alternatives to 0 or 3 there were. And I have comments, but I don't want to kind of lecture on that at this point. So I just, as a question, if you could just help me understand, or a board member who might want to raise their hand and answer that for you, just what discussion took place about alternatives to 0 or 3?
Yes, absolutely. Why don't I go ahead and just provide the initial response? And we do have our Chair, Bobby Lee on the call as well, and I'd let him chime in if he would like to add more. The Emeryville Board of Directors has recognized the financial hardship residents and businesses have faced because of the economic impacts brought on by the COVID pandemic. So they've recommended a 0% increase. And looking at what's anchored into this is that our service levels have been reduced due to the COVID. So we reduced our service levels by 30% last year and we have yet to increase that this year. And we do not anticipate the need to increase them this year as well. I believe the service levels we have will be sufficient to support the ridership demand anticipated for the coming year. We have, in our preliminary budget before you, have assumed that we would reinstate services at the full commute service level. So the preliminary budget reflects that. However, it is very likely that services will not resume to pre-COVID conditions until likely '23 or '24. And given that, the savings for the Emery Go-Round is quite significant over the next two years. The last year, we had savings, of course, because we reduced service. And we expect that we'll have savings this year because of the service, the lower level of service. So with the unknowns in terms of what ridership demands are going to look like, you know, we've been collaborating with our transit partners throughout the Bay Area, just trying to get a sense of what's anticipated and what's to come in this industry. Without having better, I guess, you know, understanding of that and kind of a more in-depth planning of the various scenarios that will play out over the next few years, the board felt that it was, it would, that a 0% increase would be appropriate given the unknowns at this time.
Thank you. That's a very good answer to my question. I have no more questions at this time, but I'd just ask if we could leave Ronnie available after public comment.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Very good. Any other clarifying questions for Ronnie or for the board members in attendance from the ETMA? Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and move to public comment. Now's the time for the public, oh, excuse me. Anyone who wishes to make public comment on this item could have submitted a speaker card by now. But we will also recognize folks who are joining us via Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature to be recognized or press star nine if you're calling in and then you see three hands raised already. And I will leave it to our clerk to go ahead and call those names in order. This is a public hearing and the time is 5:06 p.m. I'm officially opening the public hearing at this time. And Sherry, I'll turn it over to you to allow the speakers, permit the speakers to speak, and they will have three minutes each.
Okay, and I will just add that local time, 8:06. And Bobby Lee will go first and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
All right, well, counsel. And thanks so much. I'm Bobby Lee, Chair of the ETMA. And first, I just want to say a thank you to Ronnie and the entire Emery Go-Round staff for continuing to operate a stellar, you know, transportation, central transportation service, given everything that's been going on. So it is a big thank you to Ronnie and his staff. I just want to take a moment to emphasize that, you know, ETMA and Emery Go-Round, we continue to roll with the punches here. We, we are looking to our transit agency peers out there for any sort of signal on where ridership is headed, ridership trends, where the cost environment is headed. And really, it is a very, very uncertain time, as Ronnie, you know, laid out what we're looking at in terms of ridership not rebounding for quite a while. And in giving this uncertainty of, you know, and at least this is the conversation that we had at the board level, you know, we didn't feel it was right for us to ask for an increase given this level of uncertainty. And Councilwoman Bowers, I know that you asked about entertaining other percentages for increase. And I understand, you know, what you're saying, what you're alluding to. And I too am often concerned about the ever-increasing cost of providing service and making sure we're meeting the needs of our residents and workers in the city. But the, the level of uncertainty is just unprecedented right now. And for, at the time being, because, you know, we have to, you know, there is annual budget, we have to provide a recommendation. That is what the board had, had arrived at. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thanks, Bobby. Stay on the line and we'll, we may have more questions for you during deliberation. But at this time, let's continue with the public comment, please.
Okay, I will bring up Brian Donahue.
Yeah, I just heard the presenter say that ridership is going to be affected at least through 2023 and very possibly well into or to the end of 2024. I have never heard any predictions about the COVID-19 crisis extending that far in any meaningful way. Where does the presenter, or ETMA, where do they get their, that information? Is this, could you provide the data? I would like to find out where you get your, I mean, since you're, you know, since you're requesting more resources based on that, I, you know, I think you need to provide that data and tell us where you got that information. Thank you.
I'm happy to chime in if you'd like me to respond. Okay.
Right, that's fine.
So the data is really not available. I mean, there's a lot of assumptions the industry is making. In terms of the timeframe of '23, '24, I feel as though there's going to be, and this is what's discussed throughout the industry, is that there's going to be a higher volume of work from home over the next two years. And that may slowly change, driving more increased ridership demand. Additionally, the pandemic may be ending in more near term. But people's choices and feeling safe on transit and other, you know, alternative modes of transportation will also have a slower shift. And that's just another assumption. So providing reliable transportation and transit connections to the city is going to be very important to encourage riders to choose transit over drive alone. If they don't, obviously, there's going to be a larger infrastructure issue we'll be dealing with. But so providing safe and reliable transit connections is going to be our focus over the next two years. But I do believe, given the conversations that I've had with others in the industry, that people, as people return to work in a slower volume, at a lower volume, that will also have an impact on ridership over the next few years.
Thank you, Ronnie. Sherry, we can move on with the public comment.
Next, I'll bring up Jeff Sears. And go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilpeople. Two things I just want to say. I was president of the TMA, Chair of the TMA, when we renewed the PBID a handful of years ago. The couple of years that led up to that, there was a lot of public focus and concern and feeling, whether it was legitimate or accurate or not, that the board just asked for increases whether they needed them or not. And for all the many years, almost 20 years I've been on the board, that has not been the case, but people felt that way. And so I think it's important that the board show, and it has in the past, when facts change, that we can respond to it. And I think this is a moment in time to try to show people we're listening. The amount of money that the increase might have represented, I think, is immaterial compared to the message it sends. So I just wanted to point out that history has shown we need to be very focused and communicate out to the public, who are part of the people who pay these dues, that we're really here trying to be best stewards of their money. That's number one. Number two, related topic, not exactly on topic. As the Chair during the period of time where we were working on and then eventually went into contract for a permanent bus yard, and even way back when you all put some assistance to that bus yard in your CIP, I did want to just take this opportunity to thank you all and the city and your predecessors from the bottom of my heart and from, I'll speak for the TMA, for the help you gave us. That bus yard is being finished this month. We're planning on moving to it. It's going to be a key part of the sustainability of the Emery Go-Round going forward. And I just wanted to thank you. Part of that was going to be something that Ronnie said, but I appreciate you want to keep the time short. We have, it appears, it's not all done, but it, we have, it appears, built it on budget, which we're very proud of. So I just wanted to say thank you. And while it really is just a parking lot under the freeway, it looks beautiful to us and we're very proud of it and we appreciate your parting. That's it for me.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. And next is Betsy Cooley.
I want to echo with everything that Ronnie, Bobby, and Jeff said, and also thank the staff for getting through this. It was very difficult for everybody and they somehow managed to keep the buses running and, and also the city for everything that you've done. And I also would like to address Councilmember Bowers's comments. I have always felt that 0% was not a great idea, that, you know, you should always try to keep up with inflation going forward so that there isn't a problem. And this is actually one of those few circumstances where I really do feel that, that this, this would be appropriate this year. But that's just my opinion. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry, I'll rely on you to let me know if there are any other speakers because I am having technical problems with my attendees list.
I don't see any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, very good. If there are no other public speakers, this public hearing is closed at 8:14 p.m. And I just want to thank the board members who generously gave their time to join us tonight, Bobby, Betsy, and Jeff, as well as Ronnie and her staff for being here to answer questions. But now let's move into deliberation, colleagues. The ETMA board voted to recommend no increase in the assessment for all parcels and approving their preliminary budget. So comments, questions, discussion? Member Bowers.
Be happy to let Member Donahue go first.
Sure.
I just, I'll be quick. I just have started using Emery Go-Round recently and speaking with drivers. And I can say that ridership is going up as reported by actual drivers, which is good. They seem to be making people feel safe with how they were doing it, loading and unloading to the bank. And so I, I, I really appreciate that the board has recognized that we've had less required service, we've had some savings, and I think their zero idea is really right.
Member Bowers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to, my question originated from something that, you know, Betsy Cooley, I think, mentioned really well. And I appreciate everybody coming tonight and the really excellent answers. I want to thank all of them for their service to the Emery Go-Round and our community. When it comes to budgeting, you know, Bobby, I think, said one thing really appropriately, but there's a backside to it, right? There's so much that's unpredictable. And I heard Ronnie say something I really needed to hear tonight, which is that service has been reduced by 30% and the current anticipated plan is to keep it that way into the coming year. And I really want to just caution the members who are here from the board. And I really want to just caution the members who are here from the board to really think about that with the following additional touchpoints. While it's unpredictable what could happen, there's a lot of reason to believe that gasoline and diesel prices are going to skyrocket, especially if some of the rules that are currently being proposed for refineries around the state are approved. And that could dramatically, even with a 30% reduction, impact parts of operations or infrastructure. We have a very old fleet, and I know we've been really focused on getting this yard open. As Jeff noted, he's been chomping away at that for a long time, and that's excellent. But we obviously also need to cycle out the fleet, and that is going to create future capital costs. And some of those things are planned for. But not to, not to bring in a really unfortunate and tragic situation, but one of the challenges we have to kind of always resist at times is what we saw happen, I think, yet to be played out, but it happens all around the country with condo building that collapses. You have people who have ownership interest in something, and there's a lot of political pressure at times not to keep up with the cost of something or to continue to make incremental increases in assessment to keep up with, as Betsy noted, inflation or the adjustment costs and things. And it's easier to say, well, somebody else is going to pay for that in the future, so I don't want to pass on that cost now. But once you lose the opportunity to capture some increase, you can't really ever go back to it, especially with the PIB, where we have limits on that. And so my reason for my question is, it's, you know, easy to say, well, we have this situation and we have some reserves, and we can and should just spend reserves. There's a lot of people who use the let's spend the reserves first argument. And the truth is, if you have a mechanism to generate some increase, you should really seriously consider it, even if economic times are down. And so my mindset coming into this meeting was that it should at least increase for CPI, and that at a minimum CPI should kind of be the standard we keep here to make sure that, just as it could be unpredictable, as Bobby noted, it could be unpredictable in other ways, that costs increase, and we've lost the chance to do something that keeps the budget stable. But I've heard from people who have been working at this, Bobby and Betsy, Jeff for over 20 years, Ronnie, who I've worked with very closely on a number of items related to the Emery Go- Round, who are very excellent fiscal stewards, and I appreciate that this isn't something that they did carelessly. And so if their judgment is that 0% increase is appropriate this year, I will cautiously support that tonight. I just would caution back that that, my support for that position is based on the notion that service is down, and it was likely to stay down for the whole year, because I think that there's a lot of things that could change, and just as it's unpredictable, BART is already exceeding its anticipated ridership that was anticipated for the end of August. So, and we're connected to BART with Emery Go- Round. So when I think of the interconnectedness of these systems, and again, the unpredictable nature of it, I think that there is the chance that we do have a demand for adding people. And I've spoken to AC Transit about their ability to hire drivers coming out of the COVID situation, and it's very hard, and it will be very competitive, and it will likely cost more money. So there are a lot of factors that are out there, but I do believe that for one year, if that can, that can be tolerated, I think that's appropriate. I just wanted to air those additional budget principles, but I support what the Emery Go- Round staff are doing. And so, Madam Mayor, if anyone else has comments, I'll make a motion to approve the board's recommendation of no increase this year.
Very good, and I'm happy to second that. I do have one question for Ronnie. Will you please remind me of the top end of the increases that we're able to make in coming years?
Yes, so the PIB management plan states an annual increase of 5%. Now, there are some clarifications that I need to work with on staff and the consultant that with the management plan. Beginning, there was discussion that there is a way to increase it more for past years, not increase to 5%, but I do need to clarify that, because the management plan, we want to make sure the interpretation is correct. So my understanding is it's 5%, but there is an opportunity to increase it for more than that for prior years, where we did an increase of 5%. But I do not want to be quoted on that. Yeah, I don't want to be quoted on that.
No, we'll, yeah, we'll want to know next year.
Yes, absolutely.
When you reach out to next year, you're going to want to know a long way, all the data on how ridership has increased.
Absolutely. And should I, I just want to add one more thing, Mayor Martinez. We will be, over the next three months, developing kind of service level assumptions for the coming three years, and basically cost assumptions throughout the remainder of the midterm, which is through 2030, and plan to bring that forecast modeling back to Councilmember Donahue's request for budget approval for 2022 in the fall. So we'll be monitoring that. Of course, ridership will continue to be unknown during that time as well, but at least we'll kind of have a handle and a visual for council to look at in terms of our kind of financial forecast, given what we know today.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Ronnie.
No problem.
So we have a motion by Member Bowers and a second by myself, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And that closes that item, and we've got one more public hearing item. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, mending Article 2 of Chapter 3 of the Planning Regulations at Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code to prohibit crematories in all zoning districts. Is there a staff presentation? I do see Maru here joining us, and I will gladly.
Maru's our presenter tonight, Madam Mayor. Yes.
Very good. I'll turn the floor over to Maru, and I believe Sherry will be pulling up the PowerPoint. Is that right?
Yes.
That's correct. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay.
And can everyone hear me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Maru, you're coming in loud and clear.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is an amendment to the Planning Regulations to Prohibit Crematories. Next slide, please. So as you may recall, Councilmember Bowers, in February, requested and received majority support for a future agenda item to discuss prohibiting crematories. And subsequently, on April, the council discussed the issue and directed staff to move forward with the Planning Regulations Amendment. On May 27, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and unanimously voted to recommend that the City Council adopt the amendment. Next slide, please. So today is council's public hearing and the first reading of the proposed ordinance. Assuming the first reading passes, the second reading of the ordinance would be on July 20th, and the ordinance would be in effect on August 19 of 2021. Next slide, please. Crematories are defined in our regulations as human or animal cremation facilities. In addition, we also have a use category called funeral homes, mortuaries, and mausoleums, and they are defined as the care, preparation, or keeping of the dead. This use type includes spaces, space for services and assembly. The proposed amendment would not affect the funeral homes, mortuaries, and mausoleums, which are conditionally permitted in several zoning districts. Our next slide, please. According to the Batmud, crematories can produce emission supply ash, smoke, gases, and odor, odor and visible emissions can be objectionable to many people on aesthetic grounds. In addition, according to the Canadian National Collaborating Center for the Environmental Health, crematories emissions include pollutants that are known to be toxic to humans and can increase the risks of heart disease, lung cancer, asthma, and adverse birth outcomes, and can exacerbate other conditions such as diabetes. Next slide, please. In terms of what we have in our city, a pearly crematorium located at 1480 Horton Street, operated by Neptune Society from the 1980s, operated until about five years ago. Now, today, ashes are stored here for delivery to families after cremation elsewhere. The other crematory that we have is the Pacific Determent at 1094 Yerba Bruna Avenue, which received a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission back in 1992. This has operated for almost 30 years without incident and was named the best mortuary in East Bay by the East Bay Express. This will and can continue to operate under existing use permit. Neither the existing crematory would be affected by the proposed Planning Regulations Amendment. Next slide, please. So in terms of the actual proposal, what you see is a snippet of a table in our Planning Regulations, which kind of define different uses by different zoning districts. And the change that we would be making is that currently crematories are allowed with a conditional use permit in INL and INH, which is the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts. So that X, that C will be changed to X, meaning that it's prohibited. In addition, you'll see that there is an X under the overlay zone, which is the neighborhood retail zone. So if, so that basically says that if there is a, currently if there are certain areas in the town which has an overlay of neighborhood retail in the INL and INH district in the northern part of town, so in those areas, it would not be allowed. But since we are prohibiting crematories everywhere, having this X on the overlay zone is redundant. Next slide, please. So these are the findings that need to be made in order for the council to pass this. The commission and the staff believe that these findings can be made, and these are detailed in the proposed ordinance attached to the staff report. Our next slide, please. In terms of environmental review, proposed amendments are not considered a project. In addition, even if they were a project, it would be exempt under the common sense exemption. Our next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation, and the Planning Commission and the staff recommend that the council adopt the proposed ordinance, amending the Planning Regulations to Prohibit Crematories in all zoning districts in our city. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Maru, for the very succinct presentation. Appreciate it. Colleagues, do we have any clarifying questions on this item? Okay, it looks like we don't have any. Thank you, Maru. You've answered all of our questions in advance. So we will, this is a public hearing. The time is five, excuse me, 8:28 PM, and I'm opening the public hearing. I will check in with our city clerk first to see if anyone has submitted electronic comments, and then to see if anyone has raised hand. Speakers will have three minutes each to address this issue.
No comment cards and as yet no raised hands.
And as this is a public hearing, I'm just going to give it a few seconds while I remind folks that if you're joining us via Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, or if you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand in Zoom. And if there are still no raised hands, give it a few more seconds. The time is 8:29, and I will go ahead and close the public hearing on this item 11.3 and bring this back to our colleagues. We have seen this item before, so it's understandable. We don't have any questions at this time, and we have a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission that we can make these findings, to make these changes. So the order would be that we would read by title first. So if there's no discussion, colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to read by title.
Motion to read by title only.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to read by title by Member Bowers and a second by Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, and I will turn the floor over to the city attorney, but please read by title.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, amending Article 2 of Chapter 3 of the Planning Regulations of Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code to Prohibit Crematories in all zoning districts. Sequo status, not a project under Public Resources Code Section 21065, common sense exemption at sequo guideline section 150161B3.
Thank you. And do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance for the first reading?
To approve the ordinance at first reading.
My second then.
The motion by Member Bowers and a second by Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, that passes unanimously, and that brings us out of the public hearing portion of our meeting. We're moving back to action items, and we have many items to get through, so I'm going to reduce public comment back to one minute at this time. The first item we have for review is item 12.1. This is consideration of request for an ADA blue disabled parking zone at 1270 62nd Street. And we have a unanimous vote from committee to recommend this blue parking zone. So I'm wondering, colleagues, if you need a presentation on this or if the staff report suffices. Okay, it looks like that we're good on waiving that presentation, although I will thank staff for being available to answer any questions. Are there any clarifying questions on this blue space application? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. I'll check with the city clerk to see if any electronic comments have been submitted, and I'll remind folks that if you're joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized, or press star nine if you are calling in. Sherry, do we have any public commenters?
No electronic cards, but we have so far one raised hand.
Okay, commenter, you have one minute to speak.
Blue zones have, parking zones have specific requirement, ADA requirements. It's not just a blue painted curb. There's, there are a host of regulations delineating a blue zone parking area. All right, well, I have a question. Are you, this parking spot you're talking about tonight, are you going to satisfy the ADA requirements for a blue zone, blue parking zone? Or are you going to play fast and loose like you did with the last blue zone on, I guess it was 43rd, 41st, whereby the ADA requirements are not met? There's a tree in the way, the tree, there's a tree there that may not be there according to ADA guidelines or ADA requirements. So is this new parking spot going to follow ADA regulations? This is what I want to know. That's it. That's my comment.
Great, thank you for your comments. Yep. Are there any other public comments, Sherry?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public comment portion of this meeting. And is there anyone from staff who would like to address the public speaker?
Madam Mayor, standing in for the Public Works Department. I'll take that question. This was presented to the Transportation Committee on behalf of the applicant who has a disabled child and requested the blue parking zone in front of his home. Staff is recommending the 22-foot location, and it does meet the requirements of the municipal code, and that is why staff recommended that to the Transportation Committee and also now to council.
Very good. So we have a recommendation from staff and a unanimous recommendation from the Transportation Committee. Is there any further discussion, colleagues, or do I have a motion? Member Medina.
Yeah, I am happy to make my motion for this item.
Second, Member Medina's motion.
Very good. This is to approve the blue curb at, well, it is the address, 1270 62nd Street, and I do want to note the applicant is amongst the attendees, I believe, although I can't see my attendees list. I think I saw his name earlier.
Mr. Craig, Madam Mayor, Mr. Noonie.
Yes, thank you for attending, Mr. Noonie. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, that item is approved. Moving on to item 12.2, this is the 40th Street pedestrian bike improvement grant support. Is there a brief presentation for this item? I see Ryan has joined us.
We do have a presentation, Madam Mayor, although we're also happy to just answer questions. This is a follow-on to the application that we discussed with the council last September. So Ryan does have some PowerPoint slides, or we, the two of us can answer questions if you prefer that.
Colleagues, would you like the full presentation? No, I think we have all heard about this issue and discussed it with staff as well. Are there any clarifying questions at this time? Seeing none, we'll move over to public comment. Sherry, has anyone submitted electronic comments? Or do you have any hands raised? Then I'll remind members of the public to use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or press star nine if you are calling in on the telephone.
We have no electronic comment cards, and I see no raised hands at this time.
Very good. I'll close public comment and bring this back for deliberation, or if someone would like to make a motion to approve the two resolutions, we could do that as well. Member Bowers?
Just for the benefit of my colleagues, since we have an agenda here, I just thought I would both thank staff for working to put this together and have this financed and ready to go to take the MTC grant. But the staff report for the committees at ACTC next week came out today, and that included the capital investment plan, and the maximum amount of money for a capital investment project that the commission will award to any project is $2 million, and the commission has recommended a $2 million award to the City of Emeryville for the 40th Street design. So that will complement this ATP money and allow us to do the transit development at the same time, so we will have all the money to do the design. So I just want to thank the Alameda County Transportation So I just want to thank the Alameda County Transportation Commission and our staff for working so closely with this council and Transportation Committee of the city to get this in a position to be ready to be designed.
Is that a motion, too?
Sure, why not? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there two resolutions? Can I make them at one time, or can I make them, do I have to make them separately, Madam City Attorney?
Best to do them separately.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the first resolution.
I will second.
Very good. Seeing no further comment, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And then next up, we've got a resolution under 12.2.2. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by member Medina, a second by member Bouders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, that passes unanimously. That will bring us to item 12.3. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville calling for a municipal election to be held on November 2nd, 2021 to fill a city council vacancy. Is there a brief staff presentation on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you'll recall, when Councilmember Pats, or former Councilmember Pats, announced his resignation in May, the council had requested an information item. We provided that to you at a subsequent meeting describing the processes set forth in the government code to fill a vacancy on the city council. Given the cancellation of the election last November and the treatment under the government code of the three seats being appointed, the council has the opportunity to call, requirement to call an election to fill this vacant seat. And so that is what's before you tonight, is a resolution that would call the election for November 2nd, which is the next regularly established election under the Elections Code, and all of the ancillary actions that are required in order to establish that election process. If the council chooses to adopt this resolution and call the election for November 2nd, the nomination period would open on July 13th and close on August 6th, and the regular election process would then occur. We would be asking the city, the Alameda County, to conduct the election for the City of Emeryville, and we would be paying them the consequent fees. And the city clerk and I are happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Very good. Are there any questions for our staff this time? I just have one. Christine, has it been confirmed whether the governor recall election will not coincide with November 2nd?
That's correct. It will be September 14th, is our understanding, and they cannot be consolidated, given the timing that's established by the government code.
Okay, very good. Seeing no questions from council, we'll turn it over to public comment. First, we'll check to see if there are any electronic comments submitted, and if you're attending via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, or if you're calling in, please press star nine to be recognized. Sherry, do we have any public speakers for this item?
We have one raised hand, but before I go to that, I would just like to confirm that the first day of the nomination period is July 12th. So for anybody listening who might be interested in applying, please note that it's July 12th, and you would need to make an appointment with me to set up an appointment, to pull papers and so forth.
Very good. And Sherry, can you let the public know how to get in touch with you?
Yes, you can. Probably the best way would be at my email, which is S-H-A-R-T-Z, S-Harts, at emeryville.org.
Very good. Thank you very much. So that period opens July 12th, and let's go ahead and allow the public speakers at one minute each.
All right, go ahead, please.
The resignation of Councilmember Pats brings up something that I've never heard discussed here, and that is the financial exposure that the people of Emeryville have for councilmembers departing their stations early. You know, it's been a pretty rare event up till now, but the staggering costs, I understand it's like anywhere from $120,000 to $160,000 per city besides Emeryville is just, you know, financially a huge hit. So I'm wondering, I think that you, in the future, should have a meeting where, you know, have an agenda item whereby this issue is discussed. What, how can we protect ourselves against this from happening in the future? Protect our budget from fleeing council budgets? Our time could be bankrupted.
That's your time. Thank you, Speaker. Is there any other public comment?
No, there is not.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for deliberation or entertain a motion on the resolution. Member Medina.
Yeah, I'm happy to move. I just wanted to clarify with Sherry, if you don't mind. City clerk, what's the end of the nomination period? I don't think I caught it.
August 6th.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm happy to move the item.
We have a motion by member Medina and a second by vice mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
August 6th at 5:00 PM. I should clarify. It's a hard out.
Thank you. That is important. All materials need to be completed and reviewed by our city clerk at that time, correct?
Correct. All right. Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. Great, that will bring us to item 12.4, and there are actually three mini items under this. Sherry, do you have a presentation on appointments?
So the resignation of Councilmember Pats did leave some vacancies on some regional and other bodies that he served. I have put together some PowerPoint slides, just showing what those are, if the council would like to see those as they consider, but it's the same thing that was shown in the staff report. So what is your pleasure on that?
It might be, I think it might be helpful to see the PowerPoint slide to guide us along, and we can discuss as we, as we do them.
Okay. All right, so the first set are, as council knows, we have city council committees upon which serve two council members each. Community Services is, the two members are Diane Martinez, and then the second member is vacated by Councilmember Pats' resignation. And also the Public Safety Committee, which is currently Scott Donahue, and then the vacancy. And I didn't know if you wanted to consider each of these independently, or if you want to go through the whole thing and then talk.
You know, as we are, should entertain public comment, can you, can we just go through?
Okay.
Colleagues, do you have a preference? I'm happy if we just go through the whole thing, offer public comment, and then deliberate as we need to. So, yeah, just go ahead and give a very high-level presentation, Sherry, and then offer public comment.
Okay, great. And then you can see here listed the ad hoc committees, which have the members that are shown. And another option, rather than filling a vacant seat, the council also has the option of disbanding any of these ad hocks which have served their useful life and are no longer meeting.
Yes.
The county and regional and state committees are shown here. ALCO Fire Advisory, ABAG Housing Authority, and League of California Cities. For the Fire Advisory, we've got a vacant alternate position. For ABAG, we also have a vacant alternate position. For Housing Authority, there is only one member and no alternate. And then League of California Cities, there is the main designee, and then the alternate, which is currently Vice Mayor Donahue. And following on that, we have council member liaisons to our various community advisory committees. We listed all of the ones here so that you could see, but the one that is now vacant is Public Art, so that is the one that would need to be filled. And that's it.
Very good. Colleagues, if there are no clarifying questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment for this item. Members of the public, you should have enough time to submit a public speaker card for this. If you're attending via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, or if you're calling in, please press star nine, and I will turn it over to the clerk to allow one minute for speaker.
There are no cards, and I don't see any raised hands at this time.
Okay, very good. So if we could take it from the top with the PowerPoint, we can take these in order.
Okay.
And we've got separate resolutions for local bodies, regional bodies, and committee liaison rosters, so we can go ahead and take action on each of those in order.
And of course, now it's glitching on me.
Mayor, the first two are the council committees, which is the Community Services Committee and the Public Safety Committee.
Here they go. Member Medina.
I can take Community Services.
I can do Public Safety.
We also have the option of doing, leaving Community Services dormant for a few months if your schedule is tight. It is a very, it's an important committee, but we often don't have urgent issues.
I checked my schedule this afternoon before I offered it up, so if I want to do it, I'm here for it, you know?
All right.
Yeah, another thing is you could cancel meetings, but if we don't appoint somebody, then you'd have to come back to do this again before we could have a meeting if you had an urgent item.
Very good. So, Ally, you said you'd take Community Services, and John, you said you would take Public Safety?
I'll take Public Safety.
Okay, very good. Thank you both for your service on those. And will I take, can I take that as a motion and a second from Ally and John?
Do you want to do one at the end, or do you want to?
They're separate resolutions.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
We should do the local bodies first.
You making a motion, Ally, to do that?
Yeah, and I knew that.
Okay, I second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by member Medina and a second by member Bouders for the local bodies roster's resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, and again, thank you for your service, both of you. Next up, we've got our regional bodies.
Oh, I have ad hoc committees. Can I recommend that we abolish these and that we set an agenda item to abolish the rest of them, because we don't use them anymore?
I was trying to remember what leaf blowers was for, so I second that.
Well, so I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to disband the four committees that are currently on the screen, and I will ask that we give staff direction to come back on July 20th with the other five that he's not part of, so that we can maybe discuss them perhaps.
Yeah, some of those are dormant as well, so I will second your, I will second your motion.
Great.
And could you please call the roll on that motion, Sherry?
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And now we will look at regional bodies.
All right.
Okay, now, for ALCO Fire, I have missed maybe one of those meetings in six years, so I really.
Oh, I like being your alternate, Diane, because every time you ask me to do your alternate, I get cookies wherever I go.
They do have snacks.
Yes.
Firefighters need snacks, so.
Okay, Ally's doing that. I will volunteer to be Ally's backup to ABAG, but if it's going to be a roll call of 120 cities, I will be sick that day.
Scott, do you want Housing Authority or League of Cities?
I'll do the Housing Authority.
Okay, then I'll take.
It's in Hayward, you know that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But the great thing is, I can get my bike on board.
And I will take League of Cities and get dinner. And then, let's see, Community, oh, sorry, so that's its own resolution. So I will make, I will make a motion for Ally to be the ALCO Fire Advisory Committee alternate. I'm sorry, who's going to be? Is it John? Are you going to be the ABAG alternate?
I'll be the ABAG alternate, that's right.
Scott to be the representative on the Housing Authority, and I will be the representative for League of Cities California. This is for the East Bay Division, correct?
Yes.
Or it's?
It's East Bay Division, sorry, yes.
Be careful, Diane.
Yeah, well, no, I'm happy to show up at the main one, too. I've done that before and gotten yelled at.
Who hasn't?
Yeah. And so that is my motion. Do I have a second?
A second, sure.
I have a motion by myself and a second by member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. Okay, next up, we've got Committee Liaison Roster, and it's just Public Art that is vacant. That is not one that I can take on at this time. Does anyone?
I'll do it.
All right. Member Donahue, thank you so much for serving on this committee again, and I know they appreciate your presence, so thank you very much. I will make a motion to that effect. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from member Bouders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. Okay, item 12.5, this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville appointing a representative to serve on the Alameda County mosquito abatement district commencing immediately and ending December 31st, 2024. Sherry, do we have any, did we advertise this as a vacancy through our regular process?
No, what we're hoping to hear from you tonight is whether you want to advertise that and do a recruitment for a citizen member, or whether one of the council members wants to take it on. It could go either way, and then that would come forward.
Madam Mayor, if I could just jump in, I just wanted to note that I think Betsy Cooley might still be on the attendees, so I just wanted to say thank you. This vacancy is the result of her resignation after many years of service.
Thank you, and we are all very grateful for Betsy's service on multiple boards and rosters in the community, so thank you, Betsy. Betsy, I will recognize you in just a second. Let me take a clarifying question from member Medina. Did you have a question?
No, I'm just looking very grateful.
Thought I saw your hand, right, so I apologize. So we're going to go to public comment right now, and at this time, recognize Betsy Cooley. Betsy, thank you again for your service, and please feel free to just.
I just wanted to thank you for appointing me. I really have enjoyed every minute of the meetings, and it's a lovely group of people, so I just want to put in a good word for them. It's about one-third city council members and about two-thirds members of the community, but there's quite a variety of people of different interests, and so I thank you for the opportunity to have served, and I hope somebody, somebody will apply.
Thank you, Betsy. And Sherry, are there any other public speakers? Has anyone submitted an electronic comment? Or are there any hands raised? And I'll remind the public, use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or press star nine to be recognized, please.
There are no other comments.
Thank you. I'll close public comment at this time, and I'll just take another moment to thank Betsy for your great service to your community, and I especially appreciated you reporting back to council, because then we got to hear a condensed version of the items that you were deliberating upon. And, and I'll just also put out there that, yes, we've had representation from member Donahue in the past and from residents as well. So colleagues, what is the will of the council? Do we wish to advertise this as a regular vacancy and encourage a member of the public to apply for this board?
I think it's important that we do that, and I just want to say that, you know, we've had local issues that mosquito abatement has addressed, like working with East Bay mud to prevent fly-offs, and those fly-offs would come, especially to water gates, you know. So by having a responsive group, our city has benefited. We've had fabulous service from mosquito abatement for just all of the little breeding spots around our cities that mosquitoes go to, and it is a public safety issue. So I hope that we get somebody to do the job. It does pay 50 bucks a meeting, but it's important that we are represented.
Very good, thank you. Scott, can you remind us what city these meetings take place in?
It takes, it takes place at the actual facility for mosquito abatement in Hayward.
Very good, thank you. Colleagues, any more discussion, or are we in agreement on that direction? on that direction to have staff go ahead and advertise this as a vacancy for a local or regional body?
I support that.
All right. So staff, you have our direction unanimously, and that will move us to our next item. This is 12.6, and this is just a follow-on to our successor agency calendar item, 12.6. Is there an action that we need to take, or is our direction sufficient that we can have a meeting on September 13th at 5:30 PM? Is that right?
If you'd like to take a motion and a vote, Madam Mayor, to just direct the city council calendar also be brought back on July 20th, that would be, make it very clear.
Madam Mayor, I would also check to make sure there's no public comment on this item. Thank you very much. I will first go to public comment. If you should have had enough time to submit a speaker card for this item by now, but I will also recognize folks who are joining us by Zoom, to raise their hand in the Zoom application, or go ahead and press star nine if you're calling in, and I'll turn it over to the city clerk to call any speakers in order if there are any.
There are no comment cards, and I see no raised hands.
Very good. I will close public comments, and I will make a motion to, to the effect of what the city manager clarified the motion should be.
Do we need to, though, since we amended the redevelopment agency calendar, or does the motion need to amend this calendar, too, because it's technically a different agency or no?
Again, this motion is not actually amending anything. We need to bring back a resolution that cancels your regular meetings and creates regular meetings, and we'll be bringing those back at the July 20th meetings of the entities.
Thank you for clarifying. I'll second the mayor's motion.
Great. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That passes unanimously, and that brings us to item 12.7. This is a resolution urging the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, also known as MTC, to immediately program $1.67 billion in American Rescue Plan dollars, transit funds, for use in restoring Bay Area Transit Service and for immediate use. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Bouters to present.
Hi, thanks. This, I brought this as I do when AC Transit board members request resolutions or statements or letters be brought, as we've done in the past on Bay Bridge Forward, on a couple legislative items, other items of this nature, I bring them forward. And so new AC Transit board member, Shamaka Beckles, and her staff reached out to me, and they've submit this resolution, or I guess it's technically a, may speak correctly here, it's a, yeah, it is a resolution, I guess, a resolution supporting the immediate distribution of money from MTC. It's not a cut-and-dry issue, to be very fair. MTC has been holding on to the money, saying it wants to make further deliberations about how it programs and spends some of this money, but what it's doing effectively in the interim is it's holding this money back from transit agencies, including AC Transit, who are entitled to its distribution. MTC has the pass-through, and they want the money passed on to them, and there's some concern about the delays associated with that and how that could affect confidence in transportation funding, operator employment issues, et cetera. So it's there in the staff report. If you have further questions, I'm happy to answer them, but the question is just whether the city would like to formally endorse the resolution.
Very good. Are there any questions for Member Bouters? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move to public comment. You should have had time to submit a speaker card for this item, and I will check first with the city clerk to see if there are any electronic comments submitted.
No electronic comments, and I see no raised hands.
Very good. I'll remind folks that if you.
I beg your pardon, there is, there is a raised hand now.
Very good. The speakers will be allotted one minute to speak on this item.
Mr. Bukowski, go ahead. You have one minute.
Sherri, he's muted.
Yes, I'm asking him to unmute. You'll need to unmute so we can hear you. There you go. Go ahead, please.
Speaker, you still might be muted on your end, because we cannot hear you. We still can't hear you, Ken. Ken, if you're still listening, you might want to disconnect and reconnect. We will go ahead and deliberate, and if we're able to get to you, I would be happy to give you a minute at the end of our discussion, or if you'd like to type something up and email that to Sherri while we're talking, I can have her read it into the record. But at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Sorry we were not able to hear your comments. But colleagues, is there any discussion on this issue? John, I just have, I have some questions about, what is MTC's rationale for wanting to hold back these funds? And are they using specific data regarding the recovery and ridership to kind of guide?
I think, I think that that's part of the issue, is that they're looking for more time to examine it further, and I think they're also looking at potentially putting the money out incrementally. There's, it's essentially one of those more classic cases of a regional agency kind of deciding what's best for a transportation agency. So there's kind of a operator-agency conflict with a regional funding, you know, MPO, COG. So that's kind of the issue here. It is, it is a somewhat political issue, and I couldn't probably speak as well to some of the internal conversations that have happened. I know MTC is, you know, just kind of withheld it, and I will just say that the AC Transit Board supported the resolution. Several others have, but I also will admit that not everybody has responded to the request to do this, but I agreed to just put it before, of course, as I do when AC Transit members ask for that.
Very good, thank you. Sherri, I see Mr. Bukowski has rejoined us. Can we attempt to give him his minute now?
I did. I actually unallowed him and then reallowed him, hoping that would knock something loose, but I don't seem to be able to unmute him. Oh, wait.
I just saw the mute button go off.
Yeah.
Ken, are you able to speak? Ken, are you there? Oh, it sounds like we're still not able to get him. So, all right, sorry about that, Ken. Seem to be having technology issues. Colleagues, is there any discussion? Or are we ready to support this resolution?
I'm happy to support this.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion.
It's a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Member Medina, a second by Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That passes unanimously amongst those present, and that'll take us to department head reports. Now, please, is Mira still here? Is she giving the reports for the planning director?
She is, and she is.
Great, welcome, Mira.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This is the planning director's report on the June 24th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. I'm Mira Desai, filling in for Charlie Bryant, who is on vacation. So Commissioner Zepko had an excused absence from the meeting, so there was a quorum of six commissioners present. It was also noted that this was Chair Thompson's last meeting, as she has resigned from the commission effective July 1st, because she's moving out of Emeryville. There was just one item on the agenda, as listed here on your agenda, a public hearing on the proposed modifications to the Art Center project, which the commission previously approved on August 27th of last year. After taking public testimony and deliberating extensively, the commission voted 6-0 to deny the application. The motion was made by Commissioner Keller and seconded by Vice Chair Young. This means that the commission's original approval of the project still stands. As grounds for denial, the commission cited findings related to sidewalk design, signage, co-working space, and the public entrance. This decision is appealable to the city council within 15 days. The appeal deadline is this Friday, July 9th. Of course, if the council wishes to appeal this decision to yourselves, this would be opportune to do so. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mira. Do we need to take public comment on this item, Andrea, as it is appealable?
You may go ahead and take public comment. We typically don't, but this is, it never hurts to take public comment.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and do that. So members of the public, you can type really fast and submit an electronic comment on at Emeryville.org, or if you're joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized, or if you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand and be recognized. So we'll go ahead and recognize any public commenters at this time. Sherri, do you have any?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I did receive an email from Mr. Bukowski, just a simple sentence I could read if it pleases you.
That is fine.
Okay. He says, "I support the resolution, but be advised, the staff makes all the decisions. The resolution will not change the staff decision."
Very good. And for anyone watching, that is most likely in reference to our previous item, the resolution urging MTC to program $1.6 billion. So back to this item, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues. The planning commission has unanimously denied the consideration of modifications to the previously approved conditional use permit and design review permit. What is the will of the council? Do we wish to appeal the planning commission's decision or let it stand? Member Bouters?
I make a motion to appeal the planning commission's decision.
And I'll go ahead and second that. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. All right, thank you, colleagues. That'll bring us to item 14, future agenda item requests from council members. Does anyone have anything to put on a July 20th, or September 13th, or any upcoming meeting? Member Bouters?
Just to follow up, the other ad hoc committees, that we have them on the agenda to, just, I'm going to ask for it in the space, because that's the proper place, but that was my idea.
Very good, thank you. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, that will move us to adjournment. The time is 9:10 PM, and I had promised Scott to get about it here 10 minutes ago, but close to death. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate your patience tonight, with any technical difficulties and me getting the times wrong, but thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
I assume Scott's going to go party now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, second part of the day.
I do.
Good night.